Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, October twenty eighth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Herzog.
Here.
Councilmember Hertahausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, you're on.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Uh, next is approval of agenda. We do have, uh, we're adding a new business item number two, which is to review the two thousand twenty-six budget forecast. Uh, Regan, is there any other changes?
No other changes, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, please, uh, it's recommended that we actually have that as a, an item prior to the public hearing tonight.
Okay.
For transparency, because we do have a public hearing on the, uh, budget.
Okay, we can do that. Thank you, Krista. Look for a motion to approve the updated agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda's been approved. Next is reports of commissions. Economic Development Council, Josh, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to the council. Uh, CEDIS just met last Thursday, so a couple of things to update you on. Uh, one of them, I've spoke about, uh, recently is Restaurant Week is coming up. Kickoff is November tenth here at City Hall. This is the second of, uh, what's gonna be an annual event. So now that we're having our second one, we can call it the Second Annual, uh, Restaurant Week, which is fun. We have ten restaurants so far, uh, that are signed up for Restaurant Week. Uh, that's down from eleven. We lost, uh, The Rock the other day. That's so, the unexpected departure of The Rock Pizza Place. So, um, that was unfortunate, but we still have ten for a repeat from last year and six are new. So, um, that's really exciting. What I mentioned la- last time I updated was, of course, this is a great event to support our local businesses and restaurants, uh, that exist today, but it's also really good an image. And, and that is kind of a really good segue to my next, uh, update, which is, um, one of the things that came about in our last meeting is we had a pretty robust discussion about getting ahead of the commercial cycle. Uh, and what I mean by that is that we've unexpectedly had two spaces, really ideal spaces, in terms of commercial space, like the Starbucks here in our center, uh, and then The Rock, um, pop up, uh, unexpectedly. And so, we, we've discussed a lot about the idea of, we know and have discussed, and, and I think most of our community agrees, there are certain types of businesses, restaurants particularly, that we feel we may be in deficit of. And rather than waiting to see what just we get, uh, CEDIS wants to get out ahead of that cycle, start making relationships with businesses that are, um, of the type, you know, local, family-run, um, interesting, uh, start those relationships now. Um, whole different types of maybe educational events about, uh, why it's so great to do business in Covington. Um, develop the relationships, uh, not just with the, the potential businesses, but on the commercial side as well. What a lot of people don't know is commercial, uh, space owners don't always just say yes to everybody, um, especially smaller businesses, because they may not carry the same credit rating, for example. Um, but if you, if, for example, they had the backing of CEDIS, where it's like, hey, these guys are great, we'd really love to see them in Covington, maybe that changes the narrative. So, um, that's something that excites me, because I think I've mentioned, we were kind of looking for some direction, something to really focus on, get our teeth into, and that was fit the scale of the time that we have to put into things. So, um, that will be our next meeting, where we really talk about what is it that we can do in that arena, and how can we be effective? So, um, that's kind of the direction we're heading.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Josh? Thank you. Looking forward to Restaurant Week.
Yeah, gonna be great. Gonna be fun.
What, what time is that kickoff here?
Oh, shh. Four o'clock on Monday, the.
I know it's on the tenth.
Okay.
Yeah. Four o'clock in front of City Hall.
All right.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, Youth Council. We have an update from Youth Council tonight. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Hi, my name is Cal. I'm the first chair of Youth Council this year, and I'm here to represent. Um, some stuff we discussed at our last meeting, uh, last Tuesday is we're planning to do a drunk retreat on Thursday this week. We're gonna do that at Kentwood High School with the City Hall van. Um, we're also planning to do, um, our Adopt a Street cleanup on November fifth from one to two P M, where we're going to clean up Covington Park. And we're planning to do tree lighting on December sixth. We're going to be doing a booth, uh, for Letters to Santa for the kids. And, uh, I had mentioned one thing for the Youth Council is I want to plan to do more engagement in the city, like doing volunteer. Uh, I know we're going, we're planning to work with Covington Storehouse during the holiday season, so we could work to, I think, package meals and stuff like that. So that's pretty much all of our updates for, uh, Youth Council.
It sounds like you're gonna be extremely busy.
Yes.
Does Council have any questions? Thank you very much for being here tonight, and thank you to the entire Youth Council for all that you're doing.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Uh, Arts Commission. Anybody from Arts Commission tonight? How about Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission tonight? Human Services, Brian, welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, Council. Uh, thrilled to give a report of what's happening in Human Services, uh, Commission. So, uh, we just met last week. Uh, prep for joint council meeting on November the twelfth. So I have to keep all these details very limited, so we can talk for an hour on the twelfth. Uh, but we're going to discuss some accomplishments, some great accomplishments we've seen in twenty twenty-five during that meeting. Also share some priorities for twenty twenty-six, uh, as well. Uh, we discussed kind of end of the year wrap-up items, uh, went over kind of the, we talked about with the accomplishments. And then we discussed preparations for the upcoming funding cycle, uh, doing a little, couple of things a little bit different based on some events that we held. Uh, we were out in the community a lot more this last year and hearing from our community members of some of their needs and some of their desires for services. So based on that, and then the Central University Report that we did a couple of years ago, uh, based on those, we're gonna set some priorities based on the community's needs, and the highest, rank them in the highest and go from there. Out of those priorities, we're gonna create a new process for reviewing and scoring applications based on those priorities for our community. We began some discussions for preparation for twenty twenty-six as well, what we want to seize, more events, um, more site visits. We did a lot of site visits this last year, which was, which was great. Uh, so more of that to come as well. Uh, the biggest thing is we're prepped for a Hal- uh, Halloween kind of service event that we're doing right here at the Covington Place Senior Center. It's tomorrow from three to five, so put on your costume, come on over, over here from three to five. So we, uh, we're, we're very strategic, so we have some services that are coming. So Maple Valley Community Center's coming, Storehouse is coming, Catholic Community Services is coming, Kent County Bar, City of Covington, Public Works Team, Sound Generations Transportation, and DAWN. So they're all going to come to this, uh, event to be able to share what services they offer to seniors and to have an opportunity to be able to discuss, uh, their organization a little bit. As well as, we created a bingo game. Who doesn't love bingo at a senior center, right?
Right.
Uh, but it's creative. So the bingo card has things on it like, uh, check the Covington calendar for events. Sound Gener- Generations Transportation, visit the Valley, Maple Valley Farmers' Marker, Elder Health, Neighborhood Legal Clinics, Meals on Wheels, and many, many more. So that will be their bingo card, uh, that they would be able to see. And then food prizes, and we're really looking forward to hearing from them and sharing what we're doing. So we're excited.
Great. Thank you. Does Council have any questions for Brian? Thank you to your entire team, and we look forward to a meeting with you on, uh, the twelfth.
Yeah.
With your entire group.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we met with our Parks and Recreation Commission just a little bit ago, and so next is our Planning Commission, Domon. Welcome.
Good evening, Council staff and everyone here tonight. So there is a brief, uh, that we had in our last October sixteen meeting, which is, uh, we reviewed the draft for twenty twenty-six work plan. Uh, that will be discussed further with the City Hall in our joint session in February twenty twenty-six. Staff also presented, uh, the re- they were representatives from the Source Creek, uh, Water and Sewer District and Covington Water District. Uh, there was a proposal, uh, update for the Covington Municipal Code Chapter thirteen point one zero related to public utility connections and the use of private septic systems. This amendment is necessary because the existing code is outdated in how it is defined the city's relationship and responsibilities with the utility districts. The update also ensured the consistency with the state requirements for middle housing and accessory development unit, A D U, uh, utility connections. The Commission, uh, anticipates forwarding a recommendation to the City Council in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. And finally, uh, Commission agreed to cancel the December meeting and will reconvene in January twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Would you have any questions for Domon? Thank you for a very good report. Thank you to your entire team for all that you do. So, and the, uh, joint session we had, really appreciated that was an hour and a half, so.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah.
We will be doing the same next year.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Have a good one.
You too. Thank you. That concludes our, uh, reports of our commissions. So next, if, uh, Council could please join me in front of the dais. We have the pleasure tonight to recognize our Senator, Senator Kaufman. He might join us up front right here, right here in the center. Uh, Senator Kaufman, um, has gone above and beyond to help us in Covington, and we wanted to show our appreciation, uh, especially for our Jenkins Creek, um, trail, that you were, uh, very successful in helping, uh, give us grant funding for that. We have a gift, and I don't know, would you like blue or green? You can take the, like, you can pick what you want.
Well, I think it is the color of something inside, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take green.
Yeah, perfect. So that is a appreciation. There is, um, a water bottle in there. There are snacks for walking on the trail, um, and just an appreciation for thanking you for all you do. But above that, I want to thank you for everything you're doing, because you don't just sit behind a desk and, you're actually out there interviewing. You're showing up to ribbon cutting, you're at events throughout the community, and not just in Covington, but the entire forty-seventh district. So we really appreciate your involvement and how you give back and how you're open to speaking with everybody, uh, that comes up. That's why I really appreciate that, so. But, and is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, I'd like to say thank you, uh, to the mayor and the council, to all the staff and, uh, City of Covington. It's great to see the dedication that you have, and your staff having up and providing the boards on the work that you do, sharing the planning, Kaufman, and your vision, the future, uh, because that's what it takes. It takes us as a community to put together and to share all of that. Thank you to City Council, to the mayor, for the work you do on behalf of City of Covington. Thank you very much. I enjoy working with you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. So thank you.
Find it by to the group photo. Ready? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thanks. See you.
Talk stuff over.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are you? Good.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also wanted to say thank you for meeting with us prior to your, uh, the session starting, so we can discuss priorities and stuff. So thank you. Thank you for always having an open ear. Uh, next we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are Covington resident. Comments are directed to City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Please note campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comment, is prohibited by state law R C W forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. And, uh, before I go down the list, if you're here to speak with the, towards the public hearing about testimony of the, uh, two thousand twenty-six revenue sources and property tax and the budget, um, please re- reserve your comments so that we can get them on record for the public hearing, and that will be coming up shortly. So with that, uh, first I have is Melanie Burnham? No? Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address Council this evening? And is there anybody? There is nobody online, so we will close this public comment period. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Thank you. Next is approval of consent agenda consisting of items C one through C eight.
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Next, we will, um, review the budget forecast. This is a continuation from our budget, uh, summit that we had on Saturday, and, uh, Casey, um, you are up.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the, the do-over, Mayor and Council. Get through here. Um, okay, so for the forecast, I'm just gonna, uh, walk you through kind of the layout and how it works again, just as a refresher, and then we can kind of get into some of the numbers a little bit more. So we'll start with the general fund, and before I get going, is everything coming through okay, and you can see it on your screen fine?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so the way that this is laid out is we start out with our estimated actuals for twenty twenty-five, our requested budget for twenty twenty-six, and then we have our future years of our forecast. Uh, we start with our beginning fund balance, and then we have our revenues. Then we'll have any transfers in, our expenditures, any transfers out. And then in twenty twenty-six, this will match the decision cards that were recommended. And then we get into our ending fund balance, and our ending fund balance is broken out into our different reserve funds that we have. And then we have our total reserved fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, and then the total, total fund balance at the top. So I'll just walk through this with you. So for twenty twenty-five, um, our sales taxes that are in here currently, they're remaining a little flat between twenty-five and twenty-six. And then for twenty-seven through twenty thirty-one, there's an inflator of four percent currently. For the property taxes for twenty twenty-six, this includes the one percent increase as well as new construction. And I'll go over the proper taxes a little bit more, um, later in the meeting when we have our public hearing. Our utility taxes, again, are remaining somewhat flat, twenty-five over twenty-six. Our B and O, which is our new one, um, that I've added a line for this year, uh, we're anticipating bringing in two million dollars this year, and so I've kept that budget pretty conservative for twenty twenty-six, just because we don't have a lot of history yet. Then we've got some local criminal justice funds. These are funds that we receive on a prorated share from the state. Licenses and permits are things like, um, business licensing and the solid waste administrative fee. Intergovernmental revenues are our state shared revenues, or any grants that we will have from the state, the county, feds. Charges for goods and services, um, are things like our, um, consulting fees, um, anything that's ex- our inter-fund service payments, anything other than the aquatics and athletics, um, charges for goods and services. We've got a little bit of fines and forfeitures. These are just our court revenues that, um, we get from the court, and then just a reminder on how the court revenues work. A hundred percent of those funds go back to pay for our court services. And then, like I mentioned, we have our aquatics fees, a little bit of a dip that you see here between twenty-five and twenty-six. And then we've kept it relatively flat moving out into the future years. Um, for athletics and recreation, again, a little bit of dip for twenty twenty-six, um, keeping things a little bit more conservative. Um, and then miscellaneous is really just our interest income, technology surcharge fees, and just some minor things there. For our operating transfers, the only thing that we are having come into the general fund for twenty-five and twenty-six is a transfer from the Public Art Fund. Um, there's some projects that take place are, that are art-related, that aren't generally capitalized, and so there, those are things like the, um, Karma Collection and, uh, the Sidewalk Chalk Artist for Covington Days, those type of things. So those funds come back to the general fund where we pay for them in our, um, parks or rock-a-budget. Then we have our expenditures. So we have our salaries and wages, um, for twenty twenty-six. This includes the COLA of two point seven, um, zero one five percent. And then, um, just the annual growth moving forward, I have a little bit of a higher growth rate in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then I have it starting to taper off just a little bit in twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. And that is because as part of the salary study we did, it moved some folks that had been maxed out on the salary ranges, uh, it down a couple of steps, and so we have, uh, quite a few people that'll receive raises for the next couple of years, but then we have a large, um, group of folks that will be maxed out again. So I've kind of tapered that down a little bit. Our personnel benefits, this had a, um, this year we had a medical increase of almost, um, ten percent, so that is accounted for in here. Um, our supplies, um, minor supplies, um, that we have overall, that's part of the budget. And this year I did something a little bit differently. I pulled out the police services contract versus our other services and charges, because they were growing at different rates, and it was just easier to have a, um, just more transparent for me, so that I could track it a little bit easier. For our police services contract, I've got a growth rate of six point five percent moving forward. Our other services and, uh, charges, these are things like professional services. Um, they would be, um, any central service payments, things of that nature. Our debt service, this is mostly the City Hall lease payment that makes up the majority. Uh, other minors debt service are just like copy machines and things like that. And then our central services cost allocation, just as a reminder why this is a negative and how that works, is uh, all the other funds, development services, streets and swim, uh, pay their portion of central services to the general fund. So it's a direct reduction to those expenses. So that's why you see that as a negative. And the central services, just to remind you, are things like the lease payment, um, W C A, I A insurance. It's our fleet, it's our I T, emergency management, those things that are spread amongst all the funds. And then for other financing uses, we have some operating transfers out. So for twenty twenty-six, our operating transfers out are for, um, one C I P project, Jenkins Creek Trail, as well as the Public Art Fund. And then in future years, starting in twenty twenty-seven, the transfers out are for the Street Fund and the Public Art Fund. For decision cards, we went over these on Saturday. These is, this is just a breakdown between the ongoing and the one-time charges. And then our toting, total, excuse me, ending fund balance for twenty twenty-six is, uh, twenty point one five two million. And I'll go over the reserve balances with you and kind of show you how those are working. So for the Aquatics Center Reserve, we had a reduction from one point four to one point three, and those are just based on the decision card that was approved for the Pool Liner and Aquatics Bathroom Project. Our debt service reserve, uh, I've kept that in here as just a flat rate, uh, for a couple of different reasons. Um, this debt will be paid off in twenty twenty-seven, but we have the new Public Works Trust Fund loan that's coming. Uh, so we'll have a, some sort of reserve for that. And then we also are still waiting on the bid for the maintenance shop to come through, and one idea that had been floated was to potentially use some of these funds if, if we needed it. So I've just kind of locked those up across the board moving forward until we get a couple of those things ironed out. And then the equipment reserve, the drop you see here again is for one of the decision cards, that Toro Outcross that was, um, approved. So that's coming out of there. And then the H B fifteen ninety, this includes all three portions. This includes the forty percent that we use for, um, the Community Care Program. It includes the, the other remaining sixty percent, the half of that that goes to skip, and the other half that we're currently reserving for construction. And then we have the, the Parks Reserve, and again, the Parks Reserve had a couple of decision cards that came out of it. Um, one was the, uh, C C P cameras, and then the other one is escaping me at the moment. Oh, and the other one is the Jenkins Creek Trail, um, transfer out that I mentioned up above. And the reason, um, the Jenkins Creek Trail wasn't a decision card, it was something that Council had already approved this year. Ethan had brought it to you, but he didn't need the funds until next year, so I put the funds in next year's budget. Then I have our Public Safety Reserve is what I've named the, the B and O funds that have come in, and, um, what I've done here is the money that came in in twenty twenty-four, I've only used the, or twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, um, was my beginning balance. And then I've only used the Public Safety Reserve for my contract overages. And so I used twenty twenty-three as my base. Since we implemented the B and O tax in twenty twenty-four, I looked at what did the B, or what did public safety costs increase from prior to having the B and O to implementing the B and O? And so each year I'm taking that overage out of the Public Safety Reserve until you can see, you can see it's dwindling. I'm able to take like a hundred percent of the overage here, a hundred percent of it here, and then it's starting to get less and less, unless I'm not able to completely, um, recoup the overage for the contracts, um, with the funds that are coming in. And if you remember, Regan had, uh, gone over that slide during the budget workshop that showed that the costs of the public safety increases weren't keeping up, or the revenue isn't keeping up with the cost of the, the public safety increases. The Town Center Reserve, there's no changes to that. There was no, um, decision cards or anything taken out of that. And so our total reserve fund balance of all of our reserves for, uh, next year is seven million. Our unreserved fund balance is thirteen million, and so our total again is the twenty, which matches the twenty that's up here. So if I'm looking at my twenty percent fund balance target, my twenty percent fund balance target is four point two million dollars. And if I'm looking at my entire fund balance of twenty million, looks pretty good. I am definitely above the four point two million. What we tend to look at, though, is our unassigned fund balance. We tend to, um, kind of treat our. What we tend to look at though is our unassigned fund balance. We tend to um kind of treat our reserves separately. And um with the thought being that we've earmarked those to use for a specific reason or they may have a restriction like the public safety reserve or the HB fifteen ninety reserve. And we can't really use those funds for anything other than their intended purpose. So if I look at my unassigned fund balance, I'm still over. I I need four point two, I'm at E point nine, so I'm still doing good. But going out into the future, first I should mention that I did roll in the the changes that were part of the budget workshop. So I've um added back in the community care coordinator at ten hours. That is coming out of the HB fifteen ninety and opioid funds. That's just a one time for twenty twenty six. So I've made that change. I've rolled in the three thousand dollars ongoing for the ECSJ administered event grant funding. I've rolled in the ten percent increase to the human services funding, the thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty. And then I've added in one police officer at about two hundred and ninety one thousand. So those um things are already in here. So let me just preface the forecast was saying that. So when you look out into the future in twenty thirty one or twenty thirty, excuse me, you can see that my twenty percent fund balance target is five point two. And my margin above it is four point six. So I am, I'm still good. But my unassigned fund balance is in the hole. So this is where I'm starting to burn through all of these reserves and then starting to eat into my unassigned fund balance. And then in twenty thirty one, you can see I've eaten through uh everything. So I've and I dipped into the unassigned fund balance by seven point six million. So that's kind of what the general fund looks like with those additional adds. Um, is is there any questions before I keep moving? I'm sure that you guys might have some questions on the general fund.
Yeah, Sean.
Just uh just so we're clear, the the things we approved or um move forward, the decision cards, those are showing up in these these numbers. Okay.
They are in here.
That's great.
Um, and then just as you can see up here, my surplus, my revenues over expenditures with adding in those additional things. Um, I'm just getting to some pretty big numbers here.
Jennifer.
Casey, I have a question um about the expenditures, uh a sanity check on those salaries and wages. You know, going from five point seven this year to eight point six four seven in six years is if I'm doing my math right, about a fifty percent increase in salary growth, that that seems like if I knew I was gonna get fifty percent more six years from now, I'd be pretty stoked. That seems high.
So I've got an eight percent growth factor going forward and what that's made up of is the average COLA from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty five is about three point six percent. And then with the new salary study, we have four percent steps. So I'm right, almost at eight percent. I mean, there might be a half a percent kind of wiggle room in there, but it's it's pretty spot on to what what it will be based on the number of folks that will be getting steps in those years. And then, like I mentioned, in twenty twenty nine is when we start to see some of those folks drop off that have or stay flat, I should say, because they will only be getting COLAs, they'll no longer be getting steps.
And by eight percent growth, you mean hiring additional people?
No, eight percent growth is just COLA and steps. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Of course, we have control over the COLA. So we could, you know, we could, we could freeze steps, we can freeze COLAs. There's things that we can do.
Definitely a much larger.
Yeah.
Salary and wage projection that I see when we do this exercise at uh at work and uh.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Casey, go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Uh, so for the street fund. So for the street fund, we have the TBD sales tax. So this is the point three percent. Um, again, we're keeping that kind of at a flat number moving forward um just for twenty five and twenty six, and then it's got a small amount of growth, five percent moving forward. You can see we have the TBD vehicle license fee. We've still received some of those funds in twenty twenty five. We're expecting them to taper off at some point. I have nothing projected for twenty twenty six. Uh, the licenses and permits, this is just the Comcast franchise fee that comes in um to the street fund. And then we have our street fuel tax. That's our state shared revenue from the state. And then miscellaneous is just some interest income that comes in. So not a lot of revenue sources in the street fund to go over. And then operating transfers, we have uh the operating transfers in are generally just from the street fund. I don't have one scheduled for twenty twenty six because they had enough fund balance not to need it. But moving forward, starting in twenty twenty seven, based on projections of the revenue versus the expenditures, they would again need to start getting some general fund subsidies. Salaries and wages will have the same um projections as far as COLAs and steps. The same increases for medical, for personnel benefits, um minor increases for supplies. Other services and charges are all of their contracts, um landscaping, all of those type of things. And debt service is just some um minor copy machines that they've got there. And then the transfers out, this is the first point one percent of the TBD sales tax that we received. And we transfer it to the CIP fund, to the pavement um preservation program that we've started there. And once we get a little further in the in the forecast, I do have uh another street forecast to show you. Um, once we discuss, uh we didn't get a chance to discuss it at the budget workshop. Again, I apologize that I had to leave early. But the other point five FTE that was um asked for in the street fund, the public public works uh project manager. We had shown it unfunded as far as the decision card went. And if you remember, the other half FTE was approved as part of the drainage utility study in the swim fund. So we had come up with a couple of scenarios that we wanted to show you of a way that we could fund that. But I will, I'll show that to you in here in a couple more worksheets. So again, as of right now, this first point one percent of the TBD sales tax is going straight to the CIP fund. Um, we approved just one minor um decision card for the traffic calming project. Their total fund balance is two hundred and forty five thousand. And they are meeting their ten percent requirements. And basically, I've just given them exactly what they need to remain at their ten percent requirement out of the general fund. So um, oh, sorry, I need to scroll up. So I've kept that just exactly what they need. And any questions on the street fund?
Any questions? Nope, there's no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
For the development services fund, um get this fund is a little bit of a different animal. We only generally project the current year and um the requested year. So for uh licenses and permits, we're seeing just a little bit of a decrease. Charges for goods and services, again, a little bit of a decrease. And I think we had gone over this at the budget workshop, the decrease is uh due to um on both sides of the expense and the revenue, the fire impact fees. Um, those are on both sides of the equation. So there was a little bit of a a decrease there as you can see right here. And then you can see right here down in other services and charges. And then again, the same for salaries and wages, the same increase for the COLA and the steps. Personnel benefits have the same medical increases. Really minor increases in supplies. And then, like I said, the other services and charges actually decrease based on the fire impact fee projections. And no decision cards were approved for the development services fund. Um, I would say based on these uh the deficit that we're seeing for twenty twenty six. This is something that Selena and I uh keep a really close eye on and her and I meet quarterly to review these numbers just to try to stay ahead of it in case there is any issues. They always seem to cut these numbers in half. Um, but it's definitely something I still keep an eye on because those are still big hits to the fund balance moving forward each year. And they are still meeting their fifteen percent fund balance requirement. Any questions on development services?
Nope.
So for the swim fund, the swim fund, I is a little bit different where I use the cash balance instead of the ending fund balance. And the reason for that is just as a reminder, the fund balance for the swim fund, because it's an enterprise fund, has all of the assets in it. So all the pipe in the ground and everything else. So there's probably twenty million dollars worth of fund balance. And I don't want it to get confused that they actually have twenty million in cash. So their cash balance is beginning with the four point four. Um, I will mention that these have all of the new numbers in it from the drainage utility study that we just recently adopted. So those have all already been rolled in here. So any um increases, like the decision cards um that we had shown unfunded in the budget, but were passed during the drainage utility study like that half FTE for um communications and the half FT for the public works project manager, those are in here. So we have our um customer charges. And again, that's just our drainage utility fee. And this includes the six percent and then the six percent moving forward. We have some grant revenue based on the projects that they had put forth to you in the drainage study. And then miscellaneous is just interest income. And the salaries and wages, again, like we mentioned, this includes the steps and the COLA as well as um in twenty twenty nine, the drainage utility study had an additional maintenance worker. So that's been included in here. For twenty twenty six, for supplies, really minor changes. Other services and charges, again, just a minor changes here. Capital outlay, um, we had shown in the drainage utility study that there was going to be some big capital outlay projects as well as a big grant to offset it. So I had put both sides of those in. And then for the debt service, this is just um our copy machines that we pay. And then we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had put in the rate study to help with the maintenance facility. Again, we're still waiting for those bids to come in, but we've got that that can go towards that project. And we've got our decision cards that were uh well, not necessarily that that were approved, but they were part of the rate study. So again, those were those positions that I had mentioned. Those are in here. So we can see what it looks like. And this, at the end of the day, will have matched your cash balance that we were showing in the drainage utility study when we adopted it. So you can see their twenty percent um fund balance target is being met all the way out to the end. They are deficit spending. But they're doing that on purpose for some of the CIP projects they're doing and drawing that cash balance down. Any questions on the swim fund?
Nope.
Okay. And then, uh, like I mentioned, on the oh, I forgot to uh take my highlights off here, excuse those. But like I mentioned, on the new position that they were asking for as part of the drainage utility study, we had adopted half of it. Um, this was an idea that we came up with for a potential way to fund the other half out of the street fund. And so basically, this is the exact same forecast as the street fund that I just presented, except for a couple of changes. And those changes are decreasing the operating transfer out to the pavement pred- preservation program in an amount that would cover the the position. So the position is ninety five thousand dollars a year for that position. So I've reduced my transfer by that amount for twenty twenty six. And then in twenty twenty seven, I've reduced the transfer out. Um, again, for the position, you can see it has just gone down from the seven twenty five and I'm just reducing it. But the other idea that we had pitched, because the general fund uh again, as you see, the fund balance projections out in twenty thirty one is maybe we could reduce the subsidy to the street fund by half and keep some of those uh TBD sales taxes in the street fund um to compensate for the general fund, not sending that subsidy over. So what that means is I've reduced this in half from two sixty three, two hundred and sixty three thousand five hundred to one hundred and thirty two coming from the general fund. And again, just so on and so forth. This was three hundred ninety or three hundred fifty nine thousand coming from the general fund. I've reduced that in half. Um, and again, I've reduced this transfer going out to the pavement preservation program. Um, it it works. Um, I'll just kind of show you just a little bit more information here. But our current balance as of what I'm projecting as of the end of this year that will have in the pavement preservation fund is almost one point one million dollars. We'll have that much money. Then in twenty twenty six, I would be transferring in this much revenue that's coming out of the point one percent. And that would um allow five hundred thousand dollars in projects. That would be, I can let Dawn chime in if you'd like to, what type of projects, but sidewalk panels, chip ceiling, things like that. Um, whatever, there's, I think there's quite a bit of work. He can actually get done with that five hundred thousand. And then I was just trying to project, where am I and how long can I run this type of project without running out of money? And I can get myself out to twenty thirty four still with not running out of money. But this was just an idea. We just wanted to pitch it to you and uh see how you felt about that. If that was something that I that you would want me to add to the changes worksheet potentially to fund that other half of that FT. Um, again, if Dawn has anything that he wants to add, I can let him chime in.
And Casey, remind everybody what that other, what that position is for people that are online.
Sure. Um, actually, Dawn, would you mind?
Uh, you know, so um the project manager, uh public works project manager position would be, as we talked the other day about the swim portion of that would be half of their time would be dealing with uh the swim capital projects and delivering that. This other half would, with the money that we're putting away for pavement preservation, just needing someone to oversee that and and run that. And uh so this would basically be um the other half uh of that person's time would be basically running the pavement preservation project. So that would be like um Casey was saying, could be uh chip seals and overlays and uh uh seal coats, things like that on the roadways that are uh obviously, as you guys know, um important and why we actually put that money there. So that would be what the the other half that would be for.
So currently in the proposed budget is funding half of an FTE. This is to fund a full FTE.
So right now there's a half FTE that is just fully funded by swim. So there wouldn't be any funds that we could, we wouldn't be able to utilize that person to run um street, street projects because it's only being funded by swim. So this would allow the street side of that to be done.
Okay, so it's just, this allows for a full time person versus a half person. Okay. Debbie.
Thank you. So Dawn, would that split be fifty fifty or sixty forty?
Yeah, it's uh fifty fifty.
Okay.
Is how it's uh proposed.
Okay, and the fifty percent is already in the swim fund.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else? No, Christina.
Thank you. Done a few, a couple, maybe last year, maybe the year before. You came to us and you showed us a layout of everything that our city needs to update our streets to where they need to be. Um, when I'm looking at the graph, not not necessarily, not this one, but uh the one right before this, Casey, do you?
Do the street funds? The or I'm not sure.
No, that's okay. What we were, the five hundred, yes, the project.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Here you go. Thank you, thank you.
So is that? I I was curious at first. I'm like, why five hundred only? Um, perhaps that's probably what we could do in that, you know, that we can't just bite off more than we can do. Will will twenty six, twenty seven, how long before we're caught up? I know we did the TBD specifically for this. Um, it it was an extraordinary amount and every year it was exponentially growing, right? So it wasn't like if we could just put this off to next year or a couple of years down the line. Does this? Does this cover that?
This puts, um, if you recall, uh, I think the numbers we were closer to again, based on the data we had at the time, and we're getting more data coming in because we did a recent survey from that. So we still haven't got that data. We're supposed to literally get it any day that will show us what the updated conditions are on the roadways, will give us some comparisons about how how they're deteriorating over time, you know, that type of thing. We'll be doing comparisons, but um. how they're deteriorating over time, you know, that type of thing. We'll be doing comparisons, but um based on the data that we had. I think we were um close to needing, I think, over eight hundred thousand a year or something like that, that would be going uh towards that. Um so even before when we, when we initially projected this, we were close to the five hundred thousand that we would be going towards uh um pavement preservation, because we didn't, we did have in there a projection to have staff that we actually had a full-time person that was going to be utilized um to be uh managing the pavement preservation. So what we found is um we can still make a significant uh improvement with that, with that five hundred thousand and still do some uh very good projects. Um and then see how things are going over the next uh few years and really uh lay out a plan of what things look like, especially with the new data that we come in. So we could literally say, okay, let's let's do this in this neighborhood in twenty twenty eight, you know, that type of thing, and really be able to put that information out there and feel comfortable about what that is.
Thank you. And and this is a live, the the streets are living streets. People are always on them and it's, you know, once we catch up to one, there will be another. And so it's just going to be this full circle, but it looks like it's potentially growing.
It it's, I mean, it's, it's really um, you know, great that there's funding that that's in there that will help based on versus us not having any in there in the past.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Uh Dawn, just how difficult would it be to manage this pavement program without that halftime person?
Um yeah, uh very, very difficult. Um we've actually tried to, even with trying to get some consultants to help us with this, you know, and even with that, it's, it's just challenging in that you've got, what you're trying to do is really get the best uh cost benefit, right? You could easily say, hey, go drop a million dollars and go overlay a road and utilize your money very quickly, right? What we're trying to do is say, how can we stretch those dollars? And so by doing that, you really need to analyze things. You're looking at that, uh you know, it's different software pieces that will help you predict based on the data that you have. This one's deteriorating more. This one's where you want to spend, you know, you're gonna get your best bang for your your bucks. It's gonna str- you know, stretch your dollar a lot better. So that's the reason why we feel the necess- you know, uh necessity for that is to have someone to really do that because that would really um stress that dollar a a whole lot more. Uh we've tried to absorb some of that and we can do a little bit of that. We are doing a little bit of a um uh kind of a patching uh project right now and and a couple of sidewalk panel projects that are coming out of that too. But to do a lot more, it's, it's just um, it's pretty difficult with, there are other larger C I P projects too that we're trying to do as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Uh no other questions, Casey?
Okay, perfect. Um I just wanted to go back to the general funds um with changes. Um this also takes into account the the half of that subsidy that I mentioned with the street fund kind of coming back to the general fund. And where that puts us at twenty thirty one is, so we're six point five million dollars below our requirement and that is still using all of our reserves, again, some of those being restricted that we technically can't use. And um being in in the red quite a bit as of twenty thirty one with those changes. Uh again, I have those, those decision card changes in here, including the police officer that really is is taking that down rather quickly. Um and I know we had mentioned at the budget workshop about a couple of things that we're waiting on for next year. Potentially that public safety sales tax, potentially the M P D coming through. So we've, so we've got some things on the horizon. Um but I just wanted to really stress kind of what that fund balance is looking at. And I I know we always seem to be able to make that a little bit smaller by the time twenty thirty one does roll around, but but it is a rather large, large number and definitely causes a little stress for me to see that. I see Regan's got his hand raised too.
Go ahead, Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I wanted to point out as well, I believe council's intent as we were discussing this at the budget workshop of hiring a new officer, which is something we all want to do was to, because we've been holding those vacancies for so long, was to use a portion of the reconciliation funds that Adams currently using to help uh with overtime coverage. So we thought we should probably dig into that scenario and look at that. And so um Adam and I and Casey, we've been working on this and it appears from from Adam's projections that um hiring a new officer would save us between fifty and sixty thousand dollars per year on overtime expenses. So your first question is, well, why only that much? So the new officer would work uh the power shift. So that's starting at four P M until two A M. And that would eliminate two hours of overtime that we're currently paying overtime each night that that person works. So that would save two hundred and ninety hours of overtime. Plus, there's the swing shift that this would help as well. And this would save an additional two hundred and forty hours of overtime. So if we hire a new officer, it will save us five hundred and thirty hours of overtime, which is between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. So I I just wanted to make sure council was fully aware that that we're still going to have some pretty hefty overtime um expenses, even if we hire a new police officer. And so I I think is um let, what's up? Okay, so so a couple of options. One, as we mentioned at the budget workshop, there's some uncertainties that will really, really impact our budget that we're just, we won't be aware of until next year with with H B twenty fifteen, possible M P D. And and so those uh possible B and O coming in higher than than projected. So so we could wait until we know those to make these big uh budget decisions. Or it seems prudent that if we want to hire a police officer in this budget, we need to start looking at some uh uh reducing some expenditures.
So looking at our expenditures and I think we all kind of got a sticker shock when we saw that um the eight percent for the for the salary and wages increase, the, we we get it, the the cola's in there uh because not everyone's gonna get the salary increases. But what if we take that, I, we know we did the salary survey, um and I never like met, I I tell my students this, don't, when you get a job, don't mess with other people's money. Uh but I'm about to mess with other people's money. Uh what if we, instead of a four percent increase, we lower that down to three percent? And I don't know how much money that really saves us, but I I think it's worth us taking a look at.
In the salary survey though, isn't the step supposed to be four percent?
They they were at three percent. Uh the salary survey to have us keep up with some positions, not, not all of them needed that large of an increase, but um the, to keep up with comparable cities, they increased it to four percent. Um that's a much more difficult uh scenario as opposed to reducing the cola, I would think. Casey, is that correct?
Um, I mean, I can do the calculations either way. I could, I I would say that.
I I mean, like the internal function.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it would be easier to reduce a cola than to start changing all the, all the steps for all each employee, yeah.
We would probably have to just adopt a new, I think, I think you adopt a salary study. So I think we would just have to adopt a new one based on the different steps and.
We'd have to adopt a new policy and and change, change all of our um H R.
So so let's take a look then at the cola at a reduced rate then. I, again, I don't like messing with other people's money, but because our staff needs to be able to go buy groceries. They need to pay, make their car payments, make their mortgage and rent payments, but we need to, I I think it's something we have to take a look at. If any, if anything, it's just an interim thing, because one day, everything's gonna get better, right?
I can kind of give you an idea of what that would look like. Um so the two point seven one five cola is a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars for, and you can, this is the cut sheet from the year prior, so I don't want anybody to get too excited seeing this list. I just updated it with the numbers. So uh it's a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars for the general fund. If I was to reduce it um seventy five percent from the two point seven to point six seven, I would save a hundred and thirty six thousand. If I were to reduce it half, I would save ninety one thousand. And if I would re- yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but I believe you may be um looking at a different document than you're sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Well, now that I'm on to the next one, I can give me one second. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, so again, back to the numbers for the cola, for a hundred percent of it would reduce the budget by a hundred and eighty two thousand. If I reduce it seventy five percent, it was a hundred and thirty six five. If I reduce it half, it's ninety one thousand. Uh that, this is the savings. And then if I reduce it twenty five percent, it'd be forty five thousand five hundred. And like I mentioned, none of these other numbers have been updated. This is just the cut list from the prior year that I just updated the cola for. So that just gives you some context of um kind of what the cola looks, looks like.
Thousand per year?
Per year.
Okay, thank you. Beth?
Yeah, just um, can you clarify? Because I was, I was, I'm looking at my notes from Saturday, so maybe I wasn't quite understanding when I wrote down. When we're talking about our total police contract, we hold the vacancies, part of that money still has to go to the state, or I'm sorry, to King County, but we do get um I'll say a refund, a a portion of that. So the overtime that we were spending, the four hundred and fifty thousand, for example, for last year, that was, was that applied towards our two hundred and thirty one thousand dollar refund? Like, we keep getting refunds every year. So we're still in the native, right? I guess I was looking at our overage, like our refund of two hundred and thirty one thousand, and then if we save fifty thousand to sixty thousand in overtime, that kind of gets three hundred thousand, right?
I I I can, I can address that. So the the overtime costs and the reconciliation or the refund that you're referring to as
Yeah.
Um that, that's, that's the same pot of money. And Adam is pulling from our projected reconciliation funds to pay for overtime.
Okay, so that's not the difference after the overtime comes out.
Be three officers is nine hundred K.
Right.
And mine, I saw that O T is what we have left, which ranges between two hundred and four, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. So the math made sense to me Saturday. It's not making sense.
Let me help you with that. So there's part of the police officer that's not reconcilable. So
Right.
Vehicles, all their equipment, they do not give you the money back for that part of it. They give you money back for the salaries and benefits, which is, you know, I think the officer is like two eighty-ish, but the amount that we're talking about is like one seventy that you, that is actually reconcilable. And so they're only giving you that portion back and keeping the uh the remainder of it. So they in theory, if the officers become available, which uh has been very slow, then all that equipment's ready to go for them when they're ready to go, so.
But but that reconciliation amount ha- again, I'm, if we're paying overtime, like at the end of the year, they give us back what we don't use. Once the overtime's taken out, once that thirty percent or whatever sticks with the county.
Right.
Correct.
So what I was understanding is that two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars came back to the city free and kind of free and clear after all of the overtime was paid. So we essentially have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to start to help pay towards that officer. And then if we're saving fifty to sixty thousand dollars in overtime a year, that money that we're not going to be spending on O T helps pay for the officers. Well, now we're up to three hundred thousand dollars, which would pay for one officer.
Yeah, I I see what you're saying.
Is that, am I not?
Exactly what it is.
You still have to pay for the three vacancies. So you're not only paying for one officer.
Right.
You're paying for four officers now.
But we do have, oh, go ahead.
I I I get your math, Beth. Um taking the the leftover of the reconciliation and adding the savings that we get from hiring a new officer does take us up to the high two hundred thousand dollar range. The the part that I think concerns staff uh with this proposal is that at some point um we, we're going to be called to task on now we have to come up with that money. If if, now I know we've been waiting for years and it feels like they're never going to fill those vacancies. Let's just, for argument's sake, say they fill it in two years. Now we have uh an another three hundred thousand dollars we have to come up with at that point. So so doing it now or or then, it it feels like, I can see why it feels like, well, we've got this extra money here. Let's, let's get a new officer. Um we're going to have to pay for that sooner uh sooner or later.
But I guess the question that we were talking about is that because we're not under a strict rigid contract, it's an interlocal agreement. What say we, in two years, say, well, instead of adding those two back in, we only want to add one more because we already hired one now. Right? I mean, I know our, our vacancies.
Yeah, so tell the the sheriff's department, we, we want to eliminate one of our positions.
Correct. I mean, I don't know, I mean, because we just don't know what they're gonna make us do or how quickly they're gonna fill them. And if we need somebody now, well, we needed somebody years ago, right? So I, I mean, what kind of play do we have if if a couple of years comes up and we go, hmm, wow?
I don't have the I L A in front of me. Adam, do you recall um the process and the lead time if a city wants to eliminate a position?
Uh I don't recall off the top of my head. Uh I think you can do it kind of at the beginning or ending of the year. The one thing I will say about the reconciliation is if I'm not mistaken, in the last year's budget, we already spent a good portion of it to balance this year's budget. I I could be wrong. I don't, I don't know if Casey wants to chime in on that, but.
Yeah, there was a hundred thousand dollars that we decided to reduce our budget by for twenty twenty five. Um.
That was something council decided last year.
Yeah, that was, and um the, we didn't do that moving forward in twenty twenty six because we actually got caught a little bit short in our twenty twenty five budget after we got the body worn cameras and some adjustments that they had made to the final um contract amount for this year. So I think I'm gonna be actually over budget in the police services contract, but it's minor, it's probably under a thousand dollars, but so we were a little nervous with eliminating that hundred thousand moving forward with how close we got this year.
And I will add predicting reconciliation is really difficult. Like you have someone that gets injured. You gotta backfill them and that costs a lot of money for us on, in overtime. So, or if somebody has a baby and they get baby leave for three months, which I believe King County allocates. So that's, that kind of stuff is really hard for us to predict and can have a major impact on on the bottom line.
Is that not in our fund?
So if we make the decision to, if we wait on the decision to add that police officer until, say, January, does that mean now, instead of October, it's November before we see an officer?
They require, I think it's ten months of lead time. So whatever time we say, hey, we want a police officer.
Is it nine months, Adam?
It, well, it's the tenth month you get it, sorry. So
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it is nine months and then October one, technically, when you allow them.
And we, we had this, um sorry, Christina, were you mentioning something?
No.
No, go ahead, Regan.
We, we have this uh on our summit agenda to discuss twenty fifteen and if the county is eligible at that point, does the council want to move forward with that locally? And if so, then we could hire an officer with those revenues. That, that's, that's something we already planned to discuss with council at the summit.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'm just gonna say it. I mean, we're all, we're probably all thinking it. Everybody that we talk to is concerned about public safety. I mean, there's other ways to do it, not just adding officers. So if, if we decide not to, I think we need to take some other steps to help. I mean, it's, we've done the B and O and I know that's, money's not gonna last forever, but I just I don't know.
Anybody else? Casey, what else do you have?
Um that's all I have for the, the forecast portion of this. So it's just any further deliberation that you guys want to do or any direction you want to give me, any I, any other numbers I can run for you. I'm happy to do so.
Okay, so right now, the forecast that you have showing us includes those decision cards and additions that we asked for. And then the one with changes includes the other halftime person for pavement preservation. Yeah, which is half is four. So that right there shows us with everything loaded into it.
Yes. This is everything right here.
So. When do we need to, when do we as a council need to make a decision? For what we do finally want to include in this budget forecast? Do you need that tonight?
Um for, no, I'm the next council meeting. Let's see, when is that? Hmm, November twelfth. We have another public hearing and further deliberation that night. Um that night, it would be helpful just so I can have the final budget prepared for you for adoption in December. Um, so we do still have one more evening that we can deliberate.
So.
Potentially two. You know, I can always make last minute changes on the fly and I would just have to update the ordinance.
So is council good with having this right now general fund with changes? Which includes that other halftime person for pavement preservation? Is that correct on pavement preservation? Okay. And which the other half is already funded through SWIM. So we leave this as it is for now because we're not voting on the final budget until December. That way, we as a council can think about this and come back on November twelfth when we have our second public hearing on this. To give uh Casey more information. Does that work for you, Casey and Regan?
That works for me.
Yes, that works.
Does that work for council?
Well, she emailed us, does.
Okay, um.
Forecast?
Yeah, can you, are you able to email that out?
Yep, I can email it out.
Perfect. All right. Anything else from council on this? All right. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Regan.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move into our public hearing tonight. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding. The two thousand twenty six revenue sources and possible increase in property tax revenue. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, the public hearing is declared open. And Casey, do you have anything else that you'd like to provide on this?
I do. I do. I have um just a PowerPoint here to go over the. Revenue sources for you.
Okay, thank you.
And. Is that showing fully on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, correct. Okay, so I kind of went through a lot of these to start with. If I can get it to advance. For some reason, my spacebar isn't working, so we'll do this. Okay, so for property taxes, like I mentioned in the forecast. Um what we currently have in here is the one percent plus new construction. And apologize. Oh, now it's advancing. It's really advancing. Let me go back. And I'm gonna have you bear with me for just one moment here. This is, wanted to be able to see my comments and I cannot see my comments at the same time I can see you. So, uh, we're just gonna wing it. Okay. Okay, so like I mentioned, this has the one percent plus the new construction. And um you can see our property tax levies on our property tax levy rates on the right hand slide. And just a reminder kind of how our assessed value versus levy rates work. They work kind of like a teeter totter. So as you see the assessed values go up, you'll see the levy rates go down. And then for sales tax, um I'm just gonna be going over just our major uh revenues. And I can answer any other questions on any of the other revenues too. So just feel free to chime in as as you need to. So you can see for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, it's remaining relatively flat. I've got six point two million dollars in there. For both years, like I also mentioned during the forecast. This is just the um unrestricted sales tax. The restricted sales tax, remember, we've got a couple other portions in the general fund. We've got the HP HB fourteen oh six for forty five thousand. Which is currently being used for the low income rent relief and the HB fifteen ninety. It's about seven hundred and twenty five thousand and we're using that for the affordable housing, housing related services and behavioral treatment. We also have the TBD sales tax, which I'll discuss a little bit later as part of the street fund. And then for utility taxes, again, you can see twenty five versus twenty six is remaining relatively flat. Um we have utility taxes which are imposed on solid waste, cable, storm, drainage, water and sewer, which are at eight percent. And then we have electricity, natural gas, telephones and cellular phones, which are at six percent. Um revenues for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six are estimated at three point three million. For the general fund, this is just a breakdown so you can see what makes up the general fund revenues. Of course, our uh taxes are our biggest portion at seventy nine point one percent. And then just going around the corner here, licenses and permits are made up of business licenses and the solid waste administration fee. Our intergovernmental revenues are made up of our state shared revenues and grants. Our charges for goods and services are made up of interfund service payments and fees collected from the aquatics center. And the athletics and recreation programs. Fines and forfeitures are made up of our court revenues and miscellaneous revenues are made up of our technology surcharges. Our miscellaneous parks maintenance or parks fees and interest income. For the street fund, uh the major revenue source in that fund is the TBD sales tax, which can be used to for transportation maintenance and improvement projects. And it's projected to remain flat for twenty five and twenty six at two point two million. For the street fuel tax, this is one of our state shared revenues. This forecast is provided by MRSC. It's based on population. And you can see that that also is remaining a little bit flat and no major revenue growth projected for our street fuel tax. I'm not sure what happened to that graph, but I'm not sure. It was there earlier. It was there a minute ago. But uh the majority of the street fund revenues again are the sales taxes. And then we've got just a little bit that comes in from a Comcast franchise fees, which is the yellow. Um which is the the licenses and permits, intergovernmental uh fees is the green. And that's the street fuel tax. And then the miscellaneous, which is this tiny little sliver, is the interest income. Hopefully, my other graphs come through. Okay, good. So for development services, um this is kind of a fun graph, but. It's I I'm showing you um the bars that are on the bottom here are for the revenues. And then the line chart is uh just charted with single family residential permits. So for twenty twenty six, their estimates are based on two hundred and eleven new single family permits. Um also any anticipated commercial fees and land use revenues. Um sta- uh Slana and her staff meet with the developers to review projected forecasts. So that goes into these revenue forecasts. Licenses and permits are all permit types, building, plumbing, mechanical, residential, commercial and land use. And charges for goods and services are plan review mitigation fees both on the fire and the schools with no school. Uh mitigation fees for the next short term at least. Um but those are also both always shown on the expense and the revenue side. And then for the surface water management fund, again, this includes all of the information that was adopted as part of the drainage utility studies. So this includes the six percent increase in twenty or twenty six, excuse me. So that matches. And then for the property tax levy. Does that come up? Can you see it or do I need to reshare?
Nope, no, it comes up.
Oh, it comes up. Perfect. Okay. So like I mentioned, um the property tax levy includes the one percent plus new construction. But I'll just walk you through the calculation. Um we start with the twenty twenty five levy, so we have three point two million dollars as our base. We add the one percent, so we have thirty two thousand eight hundred and seventy three. Plus new construction and our new construction is twenty nine three seventy three, which gives me a total property tax levy at three point three million. Our total assessed value for next year is estimated to be almost four point eight billion. Oh, did it go away?
Yes.
There we go. No, sorry, is four point eight billion. And our estimated levy rate is projected to be point six nine cents, basically sixty nine cents per a thousand dollars worth of assessed value. So um if you look at the numbers below, I've put in what the typical home value was in August of this year, the eight hundred and forty five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And based on the new levy rate for next year. And the new assessed value estimate for next year, that same home would be worth eight hundred and sixty eight thousand one hundred and sixty eight dollars. And the tax assessment for twenty twenty six would increase from six hundred and four dollars to six hundred and seven dollars. And if you're wondering why that's not like, where's the one percent? Why is that less than the one percent? And the reason that it's less than one percent is because of new construction. So I'm only allowed to levy a certain dollar amount. And so as soon as you have new construction, you're spreading that levy. Amongst more people, which makes the rate go down for everybody else. So. That's just why when you're looking at the the uh tax assessment from twenty five to twenty six, it's actually less than the one percent. Um that's how the property taxes are looking for this year. Um. As as part of the public hearing, well, after the public hearing, the only thing that I would ask council if they could provide me any guidance. To prepare the property tax ordinances for the next November meeting. Um but that's all I had.
Great. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council concerning the. Two thousand twenty six revenue sources and possible increase in property tax? Is there anybody online wishing to address council during this public hearing? Seeing nobody approach the podium or raise their hand, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Does council have any questions for Casey on the revenue sources and possible increase on the property tax? Okay, Casey's asking, um so what Casey presented to us includes the point one percent property tax increase. Um, does council wish to move forward with that for her to bring that back to us in November twelfth? Okay, we have a thumbs up for that, Casey. So go ahead, move forward with that. All right. That concludes the uh public hearing. And we will move into new business item number one, if I can get to it. Which is discuss the Republic Services two thousand twenty six solid waste rates. I will recuse myself and turn this over to. Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Get up. All right. There we go. Thank you.
Mm hmm. Uh Dawn?
Uh thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council um tonight. Um as uh similar to previous years is the annual uh rate change requests. Uh from Republic Services regarding solid waste. Uh within these, most of these are already allowed per our contract, which would be the uh CPI. Which is two point seven two percent. Um then there's also uh. A BNO tax increase that is actually going up uh by point three five percent um that they are um. Uh allowed as well. And then um. The one, those are per the contract and doesn't need uh council action, but they're in here for uh uh informational and updating uh. Uh council. Uh the other request is for the recycling uh processing charge. Which um is a request to add that to rates uh this year. Uh the. The proposed rate is one point nine eight, which is up from one point five eight uh per residential customer per month. Uh and then the uh commercial would increase, multifamily commercial would increase from five twenty four. To six sixty one per cubic yard for multifamily and commercial customers. Um. Keep in mind, if this is uh approved, it would only go into effect for the first six months. Uh because we would be with our new contract come July and it's not subject to that uh recycling processing charge. At that point uh under the new contract. So uh if approved, um it would uh end. Um July twentieth, July thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Um with that, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, questions, yeah.
So I I'm just making sure I I'm understanding you right. So we're, we would only pay that dollar ninety eight per month for the first six months and then that dollar ninety eight. Disappears and we get a two dollar discount on our bill every every month. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, you would have you would have new rates. Uh those, I wouldn't be able to say that it's that because your rates are gonna go up to an extent, but you don't have the. The recycling processing charge on top of that as well.
Okay, so so that so that dollar ninety eight that we were paying just disappears, but our our rates are still gonna go up a little bit because I remember our rates do change.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. So as I read through all of this today, I I remember reading um that that the city was gonna get. One total charge. At the end of this year or some sometime around now or end of this year. For all of Q four, actually, I take that back. It was gonna be after the first of the year for all of Q four. Of twenty twenty five for this um recycled processing fee. Is that right?
It's not for the recycling uh processing fee. It's for the BNO tax. So the BNO tax, the new BNO tax actually goes into effect on October first. And so the 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 question or the request that was asked from from Republic is for. They they for sure have that be subject to that BNO tax from January one going for forward for sure. Their request that they're asking also is to capture that three month period. In a one time bill, they said, I think it was like twenty nine cents on the average for a thirty two gallon uh customer. So they would uh customers uh would see a one time for that BNO increase just for the uh fourth quarter. Uh we still are asking for a little bit of information from um uh Republic Services on that. Uh just the Q four portion. So the only piece that we're still are asking some questions on with uh Republic is for that portion. So um that's the only part that we're still are um. Talking back and forth about so uh whether that piece is going to be in that one time charge in January.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Um is council wish to take action?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh it's been moved in second to allow Republic Services to increase the recycle processing charge to one ninety eight per month. For single family residential customers and six sixty one per cubic yard for multifamily multifamily commercial customers. From January one twenty twenty six through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh on average, if I'm looking at this right, uh it's gonna increase the bill for over the next, over those six months, eleven dollars and eighty eight cents. Um I think a- as much as we're all having some issues right now, I think we can all find twelve dollars.
Jennifer?
Um, you know, we've we talked about this recycling uh recycle processing charge at length. Maybe two years ago at this point, it came out into the presentation, explained the specific issue um. Requiring this charge and in order to maintain the expected level of service. Uh with recycling this stuff that we're putting out to the curb rather than. The cheaper alternative of putting it in the landfill. Um I continue to support this.
Anyone else speaking for against? Okay. Uh it's been moved in second to increase the recycle processing charge to a dollar ninety eight per month for single family residential customers. And six dollars and sixty one cents per cubic yard for multifamily commercial customers. From January one twenty twenty six through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Yep. Um wanna get Jeff back? See you again.
Get comfy.
Yeah.
We were quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you all very much. That concludes business for today. Uh, next, uh, looking at future agenda items, our next meeting will not be until Wednesday, November twelfth. Um, the Tuesday night, the eleventh is Veterans Day, so City Hall will be closed. And with that, does counsel have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda? All right, then let's move into council staff comments. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. We had a couple officers handing out uh, candy and drunk or treat at Covington Elementary and um, also at uh, Latter Day Saints Church. Uh, had a great time, appreciated the invite. So people have that kind of stuff for us. Be happy to see you. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Ethan.
Wasn't sure if the order was gonna change.
Nope, I follow the same order. If you're all sitting there, boom, freak COVID.
Well, we figured you might. Oh, nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Don.
I knew you would. I had faith in you.
I can, I can mix it up if you guys. Yep. Thanks, Todd. Selena.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey.
Uh, nothing further for me tonight. Thank you.
Great. Mark.
There's no executive session and I have no additional comment. Thank you.
Great. Regan.
Nothing more. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Krista.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for um, having me rearrange having Casey go before the public hearing. So thank you. That was very helpful. Okay, Joe.
Um, I wanna first make a plea to our residents. As of right now, with no deal in sight, the USDA will be cutting off our, the federal uh, food stamp SNAP on Saturday. Governor Ferguson announced today that there will be, he will be sending two point two million dollars a week to the food banks. There are five, roughly five hundred food banks in the state of Washington. That two point two million dollars per week equals four thousand four hundred dollars a week. I do not know what the increase in the usage of the storehouse will be because of this, and I really, I am hopeful that it is not extreme. But I am gonna make a plea to our people to see if you can't help at the storehouse. Call Stephanie and see if you can volunteer. Talk to Debbie. She might be able to help you figure out how to do that. Um, but let's see what we can do to help the storehouse and help our people. Or, there's a lot of people in our community, a lot of people in our schools. See what you can do to help. I know I'm gonna be trying to do something at my school and I think it's, I think it's something we need to be doing. We definitely need to find something to help. And if worst case scenario, call your congressman. Call our senators. Let's see if we can't get this fixed. On a nicer note, uh, Make a Difference Day was about a week and a half ago, and that was fun cleaning up the uh, Timber Lane and making, having some of the comments. I know um, that Beth and I had com, talked with a resident and he was telling us stories of the city from long before it was a city. Uh, it was just some great conversations we had and we had some, and we had some fun picking up trash. Um, our budget meeting on Saturday, I, I thought we, we had some great conversations. Uh, I think we, we got some good work done and I am very much hopeful for our budget as we keep looking at it for the next month or so and seeing what we can do there. Uh, PIC, I will not be able to attend PIC at our next meeting and unfortunately neither will Christina. Covington will not be represented because our next PIC meeting is on November twelfth and we will be here. So um, and unless I hear anything otherwise. And then uh, if you are serving on an SCA committee, and I know I need to get my application in, uh, they are due by the seventh of November. Make sure you get your applications in if you wanna keep serving on the uh, regional boards you serve on now, or if you wanna try something different. Uh, that said, uh, I hope everyone has a safe, fun Halloween. I see it's gonna be rainy, so hopefully y'all stay dry as well.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer.
No comment. I exhausted myself this weekend. I will leave it at that.
Debbie.
Thank you. Um, skateboard met on October twenty-first. Um, first of all, I wanted to let Krista know that um, Covington was thanked for promptly sending in our annual um, agreement. So, thank you. Um, they talked a lot about expansion of the light rail system and then um, they kinda uh, zeroed in on the, the periods of time that light rail isn't going to run and what that was gonna do to traffic and transportation on the main corridors, north and south and east and west. And so sound tr, transit is looking to run routes during the overnight shift, which will be midnight to five AM. So um, none of that gets us what we want in Covington, but you know, Joe and I keep fighting for that. Um, uh, November eleventh is Veterans Day and the Rotary is um, again, for the fifth year having a Veterans Day celebration at Covington Community Park on eleven eleven at eleven. And um, we're inviting everyone to come out. Don't have to be a veteran or a family of veterans, but um, just to show your support, we've got a um, a guest speaker, we have a local pastor that's gonna give a benediction. We've got a Boy Scout troop that comes out every year and retires the colors. And it's also an opportunity to bring used and old tattered flags um, for proper um, well, dismissal, thank you. And um, I wanna talk to what, what Joe mentioned about the SNAP benefits. We're getting asked a lot at the storehouse, um, how we're, we think we'll be impacted and how people can help. We, we believe that probably most people, although we don't have any data that can give us anything finite, but that most people that receive SNAP benefits probably go to a food bank. So if that's true, we probably won't have a huge influx of new clients, but we have been seeing new clients at a pretty steady clip coming in for the last couple of weeks. Some that are from out of area and we give them food, but then uh, tell them where their food bank is located. And some that are federal employees that are missing their paychecks. So, so far, none have been because the, you know, we think that SNAP's gonna go away. Um, we met as a board last week and talked about some things we can do and there are some, some maneuvering and some slight changes in our processes that will help us conserve some of the perishable foods longer because we have a really good steady stream coming in of fresh produce. Um, that shouldn't change. We have lots of meat, that shouldn't change. Um, what we could run low on would be shelf-stable foods that, that we give out every week and they go pretty quickly, so like canned goods. Um, if you were thinking about donating, I, I would um, suggest canned goods, pasta, pasta sauces, those are the things that we go through rather quickly. Um, peanut butter. Um, volunteers, right now we have an abundance of volunteers. If we get hit with, say, upwards of fifty new clients per day of service, our problem is really the logistics. We have such a small space, it's hard to pump. We can only fit six shoppers at a time in our little store. So when we're seeing a hundred clients show up on Monday night and only six can enter at a time, it just takes hours and hours and hours. So if we get another fifty people, we're just gonna have to rethink how we distribute our food. So we've talked about we, we move some of it outside and have one, one line going up outside and then move inside and go. And we've talked about a couple other things. A lot of it's just gonna have to be wait and see, but we're, we, we don't expect to be caught totally, uh, you know, off guard. We're gonna do the best we can to just pivot. I think like all other food banks, and I really worry that other food banks don't have the amount of food coming in that we do. We are very blessed. They have some great food resources that um, give to us weekly, three times a week. So eggs, Costco, produce, Costco. Um, we, bread, or wheat, we, we're gonna get all of that and we don't expect that to stop. So um, I will send out, uh, you know, if we get some insights that everybody would like to know, I'll send that out. Um, otherwise, um, maybe give to, you know, your nearest food bank would be good.
Um, thank you for that report, Debbie.
Yeah, I hate to always be, I know it's what my city function, but it is, the city is
Most experienced.
cares about it and it, and it's um, information to share. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the last Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority meeting was on October fifteenth. Uh, we went through reports, the Citizen Advisory Commission is still looking for one person to fill a vacancy uh, for District Thirty-seven. Chief Jones gave an update on um, the uh, executive team with the new transition going from Chief Carson to Chief Jones, that's wrapping up, but they're also taking the opportunity to meet with uh, cities, uh, mayors and uh, city managers to basically introduce the new chief to all of them. So um, making sure that that transition goes smoothly. Uh, we also got a report from operations, um, and I think I tell you every time, but as of October thirteenth, so two days before the last meeting, they'd had uh, for the year twenty twenty-five, thirty-five thousand calls roughly for service. So. Um, and then we held our uh, public hearing on the benefit charge, very similar to um, how we do our um, sales or property taxes. Um, W Chief Kelch, who's with us here, gave the presentation and it, it's a two-tier system. You basically have a tax levy for a thousand dollars of assessed value. But then you add that to a benefit charge, which is um, looks at the size, risk and resources that they would be, they'd need to uh, respond to a potential fire there and that comes up with the fire benefit charge. Uh, we had no public comment on that, closed the hearing on that. And then I'm not, when does the new charge go in? Sorry? Would that be adopted?
We'll finalize it at the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. We'll file, finalize it at the next meeting. So, that's it. Great.
Thank you, Sean. Beth.
Yeah, um, not a whole lot. Uh, our J, next J R C meeting will be on Thursday, November thirteenth. So I probably won't have anything to report until the, our second meeting in November. Um, and looking forward to the Veterans Day um, event at CCP and also the appreciation luncheon at November sixth. So, some fun stuff.
Great, thanks, Beth. Christina.
First of all, I wanna thank you for canceling um, the meeting due to Ellie's birthday. This year she's born on Wednesday. It's essentially her birthday, but I'm pretty excited. We get to move it to the next day. Um, we had our monthly skip meetings in which we finalized, we closed our funding round and um, what we have to offer is three point four million. Three point four million, that's a total between, uh, source between the fifteen ninety and fourteen oh six funds. We've had six applicants with a total of eleven point four million in the ask. And that's just wrap your mind around that. There's, there's such a need and there's so little to give. Um, several of them, the, the fifteen ninety eligibility, others that the fourteen oh six that don't, the fifteen ninety. But that that was very sobering to see um, the numbers and, and they range between, and I'll, I'll just call, call out the city. Uh, one in Virion, one in Sea-Tac, two in Renton, Federal Way and in Kent. And so some, some, and, and if you look at these, these are some really great projects that it makes it difficult to say no to, but I mean, three point four versus eleven point four. So, perspective on that. Uh, so we'll, we'll be moving forward with our executive board to, to see exactly, and to finalize next month and as, as far as what they recommend and how much to whom. Um, thank you for an amazing Saturday. There's nothing else we would all be and I'm glad we glad we did what we did. We had some hard decisions to make and yet once again, we come out civil and proper. And we do what's best for all. Um, I, I, I worry about the food insufficiency. I know I'm I, I so appreciate how much confidence you have because that just makes me ah, that like, gives me some peace and I, I hope and pray that you're completely correct and that all of our um, sources stay our sources because if the needs greater, we don't know what will happen. But um, I, 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 I really hope that um, there's more that out of the goodness of the heart, we'll see a need and, and contribute. So, thank you for today. It's a wonderful meeting. Thank you, staff. Um, yeah, I, yeah, absolutely.
The Kent location that's being considered, is that like East Hill, West Hill? Do we know how close it is Covington?
I could tell you a, a, um, a project sponsor, but I can't tell you the location because we don't have that. Yeah, I know. That would be nice. I know, because it's so, so big. I agree. Yeah, that would be nice.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, before I go on, um, no, that's fine. You want to say?
Sure. I apologize, especially to two people here in the room, but I forgot to say today is National First Responders Day. And we really appreciate the first responders in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before I go on, I just wanna thank counsel for everything that they're involved in, all the commissions, everything you do in the community, staff. Um, it's very much appreciated to see um, someone out there uh, meeting, keeping Covington regionally connected, but also connecting with our residents and businesses. Excuse me, um, November sixth, like Beth was saying, is the Veterans Day luncheon at Edlin Yon. Uh, this will be the second annual one and there are some great speakers set up for that. Uh, I'm looking forward to November eleventh at CCP for the Veterans Day. Uh, last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of meeting with Pete Von Reichbauer and several other mayors and businesses of South King County of his Good Eggs Breakfast and Mike Flood was the speaker. And he is the gentleman that Paul Allen hired to turn public awareness of the Seattle Seahawks around because prior to Paul, there was no twelves and everything. So that, he really made a, turned it around. Uh, yesterday, the chamber presented a check for three hundred and fifty dollars to the storehouse. Two hundred and fifty of that was from the Good Work Fund that the chamber has and then a hundred dollars for the Mayor's Day of Concern. Uh, Puget Sound Regional Council, I sit on the executive board. We met last Thursday um, and discussed uh, two thousand twenty-six and federal disbursements or what may or may not be there. And I also met with the Covington Chamber Board, as I said, on that board. And then I did, uh, Joe, I did reapply for the PSRC through SCA.
I need to, I need to do my RTC application.
Uh, Restaurant Week again is November tenth, four P M kickoff. If you can make it right out here in front of City Hall and I'll be reading a chamber proclamation for that event. And Diana Patterson um, is the lead sponsor presenter on that. And for the storehouse, um, I was looking at the ads for our local grocery stores that starts tomorrow and a lot of your basic needs are on sale. Yeah, it's surprising that some of those items that you brought up are actually in the ad.
That's a marketing move.
Yeah, it's very good. Uh, that is all I have. So we will move into our second public comment. Periods, speakers will state their name, organization. Uh, that is all I have, so we will move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Brian? Thank you.
So, uh, thank you. So, I overheard Casey say something about an increase to human services. Can I ask that?
Yes.
Yeah, was there an increase to the human services?
So, in the proposed budget, um, council hasn't, um, voted on it yet, but Jennifer brought a decision card to increase it by ten percent, which would be an extra thirteen.
Not huge.
Thirteen things.
It's an extra thirteen thousand six hundred dollars.
So, whose car do I need to wash?
It's, it's in the
Uh, you can detail mine if you want to. It's
It's in the, it's in the budget, um, as a proposed budget for us to vote on, which we won't vote on until the December eighth, ninth meeting? It's the second Tuesday in December.
Okay.
This is when we vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yep.
You're welcome. It, it was an easy consensus from council.
It took us like two minutes.
So, I'll
Yep. Yep, so we can, um, discuss that, uh, on November twelfth as well, but it won't be vote, it won't be finalized until December.
All your calls, your cards will
You don't need to wash mine.
Yeah.
It just gets dirty. Thank you, Ryan. Is there anybody else wishing to address council? All right, we do not have an executive session tonight. This council meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-one.